All right, it looks like we have reached six o'clock, so I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. Um, all planning board members are appearing remotely and the meeting is being recorded. If anything goes wrong tonight and we can't continue any items, we'll continue them administratively to February 16th. Um, first up, is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? We'll have public comment for all agenda items, but if there's anyone here who would like to speak to anything not on the agenda. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your virtual hand or turn your camera on and wave your actual hand. Uh, phone, you can do a star nine, I think, to raise a hand or a star six, and the other one is an unmute. If you need to, you can just ask to address the board. I don't see anything, so I'll move right along. Um, we do not have any planning board minutes to approve tonight, so first item on the agenda is A and R review and discussion of compliance with the Reservation Road A and R. I see Peter Lane in the room here. Peter, do you want to bring us up to speed on where we are now?
Absolutely. Thanks for having us back. Um, so since the last meeting, uh, we did, uh, reach out to both the East Hampton Fire Department. Uh, and the city engineer, Dan Murphy, uh, to clarify the points that you had asked about, uh, which were based around the, um, clarification about the homeowner's exclusive responsibility for all aspects of road maintenance, including utility poles and lines. In addition to the, um, the aspects that had already been presented on the plans, uh, for, um, drainage and, um, plowing and road maintenance in general. So I think Dan Constantine is here with us. Captain Constantine is here tonight. Um, and I will let him speak for himself and on behalf of the East Hampton Fire Department. We made, I don't think we had to make any edits to the HOA covenant that we presented last time, uh, in order to address fire department issues. But, uh, for the city engineer, uh, Dan Murphy has submitted, uh, a letter of approval. What should we be doing? Curtis, should I share? Should you share? Do you have these documents?
Uh, I sent them to the board. Why don't I give you the sharing privilege and you can go ahead and share them from here? Okay? So I'm going to stop sharing my agenda. There we go. And give me a sec. You're going to see that you're co-host and then after that point, you should be all set to go. Unless you'd rather me bring them up, whichever you'd prefer.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, we have, uh, Dan Murphy's, uh, letter of, uh, approval from today, uh, regarding, uh, the Reservation Road developments. Um, and, um, uh, he's indicating that of course our proposed, uh, improvements, um, should provide, um, improved safety and provide infrastructure for the new residential dwellings. Um, he's on board with the gravel road, though he'd prefer paving, but he's on board for gravel. And, uh, uh, also on board for the road at its current grade. Uh, acknowledging that there'll be well water, uh, for the residential sites, um, but sewer service connection, um, will take place. Um, again, uh, the form of our HOA and, uh, plan in the current form are satisfactory to this, to the city engineer on that front. The plans, um, were just edited yesterday, um, to this form, and specifically addressing Dan Murphy's recommendation that we have uh, a maximum grade of each plots, each lot's driveway, uh, consistent with the road grade, which is, uh, at, uh, 12, uh, 12%. Uh, and so here, um, the proposed driveways, uh, maximum slope, uh, will be here at 12%. The other issue that you were asking about was the, uh, utility lines and homeowner, uh, homeowner's exclusive responsibility for all aspects of the road and the utility lines themselves. Um, so let me share the updated HOA. Which is somewhere here. Sorry about this. Okay. Um, so.
Peter, it, um, it didn't change the, it didn't change the image.
Yeah.
Interesting.
I think you should stop sharing and then restart again.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Um, no, that is not the document I want to be showing you. Give me one second to stop sharing. That is the document I want to be showing you. Okay. Uh, we should all now be looking at the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants for Reservation Road Homeowners Association.
Success.
Thank you for your patience. Um, so, uh, the only issues that I recall we needed to address with this uh, are highlighted here in yellow under Maintenance of Roadway. Um, where the homeowners will not look to the city for responsibility for any aspect of road maintenance. This now includes utility lines and poles, sewer, water drainage, in addition to all of the other aspects that we had previously talked about. Dan Murphy had, uh, requested that the roadway be marked somehow to indicate that, um, uh, it's not maintained by the city. Um, so, uh.
Can I ask at this point, the wording at the very bottom of that, the roadway will be marked accordingly with signage to note that the road is not maintained by the city at all times. I felt that a little ambiguous. Am I the only one there? It seems to indicate to me that it's maintained by the city at some times.
I think it, I think it means, uh, the roadway will be marked at all times. Needs to note that the road is not maintained by the city.
Yeah, and I can, uh, we can get rid of at all times. We can move it around. Um, I'll, I'll, if there's other questions about it, I'm happy to answer them, but, um, there's some aspects of this that I'll mention, we'll talk more about later, but at the moment, I know Dan Constantine has a, um, 6:30, uh, departure time. Um, so just, I, I, I hope wrapping up, uh, concerns of Dan Murphy, um, were addressed with this. Uh, happy to change the wording in any way that, to make it less ambiguous. But, um, what I do recall from last time was that you did want to hear from Captain Constantine, uh, about the East Hampton Fire Department's approval or, uh, any outstanding concerns.
Yeah, that would be great. Captain Constantine, thoughts?
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you, Peter. Um, yeah, I, I come here, um, I've been consulting with the fire chief, um, so, um, we've been working with, with Jeff and Peter, um, and Al, um, throughout this, and, um, we're very satisfied with what we've come to as far as, um, conclusion and a compromise. So we're looking at from a public safety standpoint, and there were a couple of things was, was access and was water supply, lack thereof. Um, so to get the apparatus, uh, whether it be an engine or an ambulance up there, um, year round, and also, uh, water supply for fire suppression. So we're able to address those, uh, and resolve those issues, and this is what we had come up with. We're happy and satisfied with, um, them, uh, having provisions to maintain the roadway at 16 feet, um, wide, uh, throughout the year. That would include, you know, keeping, uh, it clear, uh, of snow, et cetera, and maintaining, um, that, that passageway for us to get to the homes. We were concerned about the last lot. Um, they took that off the, um, the, the, the table as far as the last lot, um, being a marketable lot, um, because of the access and the remoteness. They also, um, as far as the water supply, um, the, as you know, all the, the homes will be on well water. So what we are, uh, in agreement with is we wanted, uh, residential sprinklers to be required in any of the homes that are built up there. And maintained by the homeowner. Um, the residential sprinklers are designed to, uh, as a life safety feature, um, to buy them time to get out of the home and such. And the other aspect was to, um, be able to turn around our apparatus. And they are going to, uh, work on, uh, doing some improvements on the intersection there, Reservation Road, and where it cuts up to the water, uh, tank. That area there, um, they're going to work on improvements, so we can, yeah, exactly right there, so we can make that as a, as a turnaround. I gave them the turnaround radius on our, on our engine. That would be fine for that, so the engine and the ambulance are able to, to access those, uh, areas. We're fine with the grade being at 12%, um, that's fine, uh, up there. And, um, the other thing was just, again, to make the homeowners or whoever purchases the property just aware of that, you know, it's still going to be, it may be a little bit of a delayed response up there. You know, and, and could be challenging at times, but with the residential sprinklers, with, um, them maintaining, uh, 16-foot wide road and having the turnaround, um, that is, um, that has helped immensely, and that's, that's, um, that's relieved a lot of, of our anxiety as far as, um, having people up there and, and, uh, you know, and accessing it, um, for, for, for emergency, emergencies. So, um, so we're very happy with, with, with the resolve, uh, the, the chief and I are in agreement and stuff, and, um, if I, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to answer them.
Captain, um, thanks for coming tonight. Um, any, do you have any concern about being a gravel road versus paved? Does that impact fire department or emergency response at all, or you're, you're capable on both?
We, we should be capable on both, um, you know, prefer the paved, but, um, we should be fine on the gravel as long as it's, yeah, as long as it's, uh, maintained. I guess the big thing is the, is the winter time, um, as long as it's, you know, uh, maintained with, you know, uh, so it would be kind of, uh, free of, uh, free of ice or, or at least treated, um, so we could get up and down there, uh, and stuff, so, so either one would be fine.
Okay, great. Any other questions from planning board members? Okay. All right, Captain, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll, I'll stay on for a little bit. I'm sorry, I got to Zoom at 6:30.
No, I got it. We're, we're all jumping Zoom to Zoom these days.
I'll hang in here for a bit. Thank you very much.
Sure. All right, Peter?
Yeah, thank you, and, um, uh, Dan Constantine, thank you so much. Um, really appreciate your cooperation through all of this. So, right, so, uh, so that's it. I think with our revised, um, HOA, uh, covenants and the revised plans as of yesterday, we have, we have the documentation addressing, uh, any of the concerns of the, the, the important players here. Um, the, um, and I didn't mean, uh, James, I did not mean to, uh, jump so quickly over your question about ambiguity in the language. Okay. I'm, I'm really, this is totally flexible, um, at the moment, um, in terms of, of language.
I propose that you take at all times, that phrase, and put it after to note that, so it'd be to note that at all times the road is not maintained by the city.
I feel like I'm back in Sister Eileen Callahan's, um, eighth grade, uh, sentence diagram class, and that is great.
Welcome to our world.
The roadway will be marked accordingly at all times with signage.
Oh, yeah, that works.
Great. Um, so let me just say this about this. So, um, this request in particular, uh, came in late last week and about the signage, and, um, it just prompted us to consider the impact, uh, of, of this, because actually Dan Murphy had requested either that it's a private way or that it's not maintained by the city. I don't believe this is a private way at all. Um, we have been, we've just started to receive documents and conduct a title search, just to, to, to really be clear on this. There is some ambiguity, uh, in the records, um, about whether this roadway is still owned by the state. And, or by the city. Um, we will definitely need time to complete the title search. One way or the other, the homeowner, the, uh, our clients, we need to have a conversation with DCR, uh, because there is still this gate in the road. It is a DCR gate in 2008, and I'm really not going to go into too much detail on this because, again, this is, uh, we, we've got to kind of get clearer on it ourselves. In 2006, 2008, when the, your, uh, the prior board had approved the covenant, um, there was discussion, uh, between DCR, uh, my client's then attorney, uh, and the city, um, as to rights to use and ownership over the road. Um, and it, confirmation was received from DCR that it was DCR's gates. The state may not think it owns the road, um, and the state was fine with this moving forward and with the gates even being moved, uh, as necessary to allow future homeowners' access to their lots. Uh, and I believe since 2008, our clients and the city, uh, have made arrangements and did move the gate at least once already, um, in order to create, uh, a small turnaround, uh, just past 40 Reservation Road, uh, which my clients previously owned. Um, so, uh, it appears the gate is movable. Uh, it appears the city is on board with, with, with what we are proposing in our HOA document and our site plan. What we are envisioning will be necessary here, uh, in the long run is something that releases the 2008 covenant, um, subject to meeting all of the conditions, uh, that we're discussing and hopefully will receive, uh, the board's approval. And that's something we can, we can work out. Uh, the other thing that I think title insurers would want to see down the road, um, is that the individual lot owners or the HOA, so the, you know, the, the association, uh, has a clear legal right to access and use and to maintain the road. The easements would have to come from the owner of the road. If it's the city, great. If it's the state, that's going to be one other element here that we're going to have to work out. Uh, I just wanted to front that so that it's clear to everybody and to also say, as a result, we would ask that you not make a final decision tonight. Um, if at all possible, give us, uh, one other continuance. We have time to complete our title search and negotiate with council for DCR, which we have to do in any event because we got to move the gate again. At the moment, the gate sits, um, right at the start of the lots, at Lot 2, uh, and, uh, if I understand correctly, historically, the state was open to allowing that gate to be moved anywhere on the road, right up to their line, which is at the end of Lot 6. Their main concerns, I believe, are just that this road does not become public vehicle access to, uh, Mount Sound Reservation, which it won't because the gate will remain there. It'll be locked and controlled by the state. Uh, but again, that's something we're going to have to work out. Sorry, what was that?
How much time do you need?
I think if you can just give us to the, uh, the, you guys meet again on the 3rd Tuesday?
Yeah, the 16th.
Yeah, if we could just have till then, um, we'll dig into this and, uh, um.
Will, will that give you, will that give you time, Peter? I know, I know your client's been waiting a long time, so I don't want to kick this down the road too far, but I also don't want to make you have to come back in two weeks and ask for another two weeks. And especially, it's not just your decision, it's DCR negotiations. I don't know.
Understood. Yeah, maybe another month makes more sense than.
Okay. I think that's fine. So I guess, I mean, we're, we're clearly not going to vote tonight. Um, the question is if there's any other issues that we can hammer out now, or at least let you know that are there. Personally, I think, Peter, at the last hearing, we had talked about how this would look, I think, like a decision that, um, you know, approved of the roadway, but, uh, required that these restrictive covenants stay in place, is sort of how we imagined it. And then can you just explain, would, would these restrictive covenants typically be recorded as part of the deeds for each of these lots or, or generally recorded and then referenced in the deeds? How, how would that go forward?
Yes, uh, something absolutely has to be recorded, um, and probably with the deeds makes the most sense. Um, what, you know, what, what, what we were hoping to have would be, um, essentially a release of the 2008 covenant, but it will itself contain other covenants, which will make clear that this homeowners' association document and the plans as of 2121 that will hopefully be approved, um, right, are filed with, uh, or recorded, with deeds, and I wonder if it's even maybe a mechanism whereby at the time homeowners apply for, um, at the time that homeowners apply for permits, uh, that, um, the building commissioners having homeowners either attest to or somehow confirm that road improvements have been done and all the commission, all of the conditions are being met a, as required. Um, I, I know that adds a layer of, municipal oversight, but, um.
I think that's fine because I do think that the city has an interest in making sure that all this is done appropriately. I'm, I'm wondering, and this is probably good, we're talking about this now, and we are going to have a continuance because I'm just trying to, um, figure out what, I mean, usually an A and R, we just endorse, right? And this was endorsed back in 2008 with a condition, and then the covenant and agreement is actually from your clients, which, so I guess they would have to release that, or we would release them of their obligation to that? I mean.
I think that what, what, what I think a title insurance company is going to want to see down the road is that our clients, the developers and their heirs and assigns, their successors and assigns are released from the obligations of the 2008 covenant. Yeah.
So do, and Jeff or Curtis correctly, if, if this isn't helpful, but do you think, Peter, that you could put together like a form of what the document would look like, and then we can sort of fill in what we're thinking about for conditions that way?
I, I already have it drafted.
Excellent. That, that will, that will save the planning department some time, at least trying to reinvent the wheel.
Right. Uh, I will, once I'm clear with the state, I'll circle back with Jeff Bag and we will, um, we'll, we'll finalize a draft that will be presented at the next meeting if that's agreeable with you all.
That makes sense. Okay, so then moving on to planning board members, here we go. James, you have any comments or questions?
Well, you really hit the nail on the head, Jesse, with me. I, I've been kind of swirling in my head what we're actually going to do with this. Like you said, we normally endorse. And what you just said is we're sort of, you know, putting together a document that we'll run through and follow, and I'm wondering, do we even have the authority to, to release the 2008 covenant? I, I'm not sure that that, I, I mean, I think we do, but I'm not a hundred percent on that. Uh, this is, uh, I, I like, I like what's going on. I mean, you, you, you have me, Mr. Lane, but, but really in terms of what we're actually doing, what we're voting on, is there an approval beyond the endorsement? What, you know, that for me is really.
So, so James, I think the way this worked is, you know, uh, our predecessor board, which Harry was even a part of, um, you know, they approved, well, they endorsed it, right? It almost fell into the track, the trap. They didn't approve it. They endorsed the plan with the condition that the applicants come back and satisfy our current board's, you know, level of satisfaction on the roadway issues. So I think we can issue, I mean, I think it's almost going to be like a decision that would, um, acknowledge the standard that's set forth in the document that's on the screen here, that the, the portion of the road providing access to the lot has been approved to the extent reasonably necessary. So that's the last condition under the old board's ruling. Um, we would release the applicants from their obligations under this covenant and agreement, and then place new conditions, which I think, um, what we've talked about is sort of the, the covenant and restrictive covenants that have been proposed would stay in effect, would be recorded with the deeds of each property, outlining the conditions about the roadway maintenance and fire alarms and all of that. So I, I think that's how it would be, and we would vote on that at the next meeting.
Just a process. Who records it with the, uh, who, who, who goes through the process of recording that with the deeds? Is that the plan?
The applicant would do that. It would be a condition that we would say, so I mean, they wouldn't have to record it, but if they want it to be valid, they would record it.
Hey, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we would absolutely record it. Uh, this is just, uh, this is a rough draft and we still have some work to do on it, but i- if you take a quick look, it's, it's absolutely calling for the, the recording of our HOA document and of the plans that the board approved. So whatever final documents of ours you're approving, um, those are always going to have to be on file. And, um, we've, we've just, we've spelled out other mechanisms for how this might work out, but I, I, I believe with this, we can address everyone's concerns. And also have there be a record that really allows these lots to be sold, uh, and get title insurance down the road.
So we are going to endorse with conditions?
Absolutely. The, the conditions will still remain, uh, firmly, uh, entrenched, uh, in any release of the.
Well, and I, I think we're not even endorsing this one because I think the A and R was already endorsed. It doesn't really take full effect until we vote on our decision at the next meeting that we have. So it's a little bit weird, James. It's, the endorsement already happened. It was just a qualified endorsement.
James, uh, James Jarvis, are, are you an English teacher? I'm just very curious. We are, we are deep, we are deep into grammar and word usage tonight.
I, I would guess lawyer based on that question. All right, so I do think it's important that we get a chance for board members and the public to raise any issues or questions they might have at this point, so we cannot, um, drag it out too long at the next meeting. So any board members, um, have any comments or questions?
Yeah.
Harry?
Being on the board back in 2008, as far as I know, everybody on that board assumed it was going to be a paved road, not a gravel road. That's all I can say about that. I know it's not, probably not in the conditions or anything else, but as far as I know, everybody on, I mean, I can assume it was going to be a gra, a paved road, not a gravel road. Well, I can tell you.
Okay. I'd like to add that I would strongly like that to be a gravel road, uh, excuse me, paved road.
I will third that. I'm very concerned about that, as a gravel road being used every day for snow removal, for stormwater management, especially for the budding residents down, downhill of that. I, I, I will follow it. Were the residents, the budding residents, um, contacted about this for their thoughts on this gravel road, specifically the one that's directly downhill of that road?
I can answer that. Uh, no, under the way that this comes to the board is that the butters were not notified. It follows the pattern of the A and R, um, and then this is considered kind of like a business meeting of the planning board to go through what was, what, what ended up in writing in that covenant. So you're, you are, currently you're bearing the responsibility to, um, make sure that you, the board feels that that covenant from 2008 is being met, and that, I mean, so, yeah, I just, no, the butters have not been notified. That, it's not a public hearing, you know, situation.
Yeah, just walking along that road almost every day, when I go on a hike, I, uh, I, you, I look down that slope to that neighbor and it's all runoff gravel from that road. Um, just from normal runoff, never mind actual vehicles, uh, on that road as well. So I am definitely concerned about the impact of this road when not being paved. I don't know if we have any leeway on that, but it seems like the engineer has stated that he's satisfied and that we have to go by the city's engineers.
Well, we definitely don't have to go by the city engineer, and I do think, I mean, the constant from, you know, fire department, city engineer, and certain board members has been paved would be preferred. Um, and I know the applicant said last meeting that that was financially not feasible, but, um, I certainly think that's the, the theme, um, is that the gravel poses a lot of problems or potentially poses a lot of problems.
It will in the future, potentially, yes, the high likelihood of. It will in the future, potentially, yes, the high likelihood of it.
Any other comments or questions at this point from planning board members?
You restate the date. Do you want an actual continuance for this?
I do, but I want to just make sure there's nobody from the public here, even though we've just learned that there's no butters notification. If there's anybody from the public that would like to make a comment or ask a question, you can either raise your virtual hand or turn on your video and raise your actual hand or unmute your phone, ask to address the board. I don't see anyone. So I would give, yeah, I think, I'm not sure what the meeting date would be, the first one in March, I guess.
I think it would go to March second, and I think far out, usually there would not be an item, but that is the date that the planning board agreed to continue Dunkin', the Dunkin' proposal on East Street. Come back on the second, but I mean, I think my general expectation of the Dunkin' is that they will not have everything buttoned up, ready for a, a full decision. I think the second will be more like an update for that project, so.
It's still any of those meetings, there's going to be a ton of people wanting to talk.
Yeah, so Peter, does it make sense to try to jump to March sixteenth instead? He may have a lengthy wait on the second.
Yeah, because frankly, I don't know how much time we're going to need with the state, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think DCR has to be a giant question mark if you have to negotiate with them just about getting them on the phone probably. So it's probably better to take more time than less.
We'll take the sixteen. Thank you.
A motion to continue the Scalyon La Page Reservation Road A and R to March sixteenth.
Seconded.
All right, to continue to March sixteenth. James?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I. So Peter, I guess the only other wrinkle is if you can go back and talk to your clients about the pavement issue. I, I'm sure that's, that's a big ask, but it may end up being, it may end up being dispositive. So I think if there's any way we can do the pavement, that would obviously make it easier. But in any event, we will see you on the sixteenth of March.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks so much, Peter. Have a good night. Okay, so I did just want to, if nobody on the board objects, I was going to propose moving up the Insa request real quick because I think it's just a determination about whether it's minor or not. And if it takes more than five minutes, it's not minor and we'll have to put it on a public hearing. So any board members object to that? Okay, so then next up is Insa Inc. Request to Alter Operating Hours to Conform with Updated Cannabis Zoning. Is there someone here from Insa who can jump on?
There is. Hi, everybody. Yeah, it's Steve Riley from Insa. I'd have, I put myself on camera for everybody, but I'm chasing kids around the house. My, my babysitter fell through. So what we're seeking is, is a change and a determination that it's a minor change in our special permit to, to allow hours of operations consistent with the new zoning bylaw that's being enacted or the amended zoning bylaw. That would allow us to operate between the hours of eight AM and ten AM. Right now, we're not able to operate during those hours. We think that that'll give us an ability to better compete with some of the other municipalities in the area. Northampton, for example, is at eight AM. We have our Salem facility that opens pretty early. It actually opens at seven AM, so an hour earlier than eight. We haven't experienced any kind of issues at that time. We would probably expect less at that time earlier in the day, but we haven't seen any at that facility. As you guys know, I think we haven't had any issues at the, the site we operate in East Hampton. And we don't have any reason to believe that the additional two hours earlier in the day would lead to any issues.
Yeah, I, I keep forgetting every time this comes up that it wasn't amended to make it open any later at night. It's only in the mornings. And to me, as I've said before, I think that seems, while it may be significant to the business, I think it's far less significant to sort of disrupting neighbors. I tend to think that it's minor. Steve, was that bylaw amendment passed, or maybe Jeff, you know, or are they meeting tomorrow on that?
I'd probably defer to Jeff. I had some questions on the procedure, actually.
Yeah, no, that's good. Thanks. Yes, the planning board held a public hearing jointly with the ordinance and recommended to city council. And the city council is conducting their public hearing tomorrow at six fifteen, so they have not voted on it yet.
We could, we could vote to amend the decision to allow Insa to be open to the full extent our bylaws allow, and that way, if and when it's ever adopted, it covers that. Would that, would that work for you, Steve? Did I lose you there, Steve?
I had you on mute. Sorry, guys. Yes, that'd be, that'd be perfect. I think that's a good suggestion.
So I guess the issue here for the board members is whether they consider this minor or not. If it's not minor, we would need to have a new public hearing and they would notice it and we would amend the permit. Otherwise, we can do it administratively. So any planning board members have any comments, questions, concerns about this proposal? All right, so I guess technically it would be a motion to determine that extending their hours to the fullest extent allowed by East Hampton bylaws is a minor modification, I think.
I saw move.
Seconded. Sorry, I had to unmute.
Harry and Austin, you guys can feel free to second.
You can, you can. You're sitting there with your, Harry's sitting there with his camera with.
A motion maker and a second or so.
I know. Noted.
The motion, the motion is to treat expansion of the operating, operating hours to the maximum allowed by East Hampton bylaws as a minor modification. So voting in favor of that. James?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I. Steve, good luck. Thanks for coming on here with your kids in the background.
Great, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night. All right, so next up is a public hearing for Kevin Sahagian seeking a special permit to operate a drive-in restaurant at one fourteen North Hampton. And I see Captain Jack right there on the bottom of a Zoom screen, so I assume that's Mr. Sahagian. I hope I'm saying that right.
How you doing? Can you, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so can you just walk us through sort of what you're planning on doing and what might be different from what you're currently doing? And we can figure out where we are.
So the plan is the co-op, I actually don't even know when the co-op plans to open. Hopefully, the, the construction crew tells me maybe August. But, you know, there's no set date, I don't believe. So we're seeking a temporary spot for the summer again. Hopefully, you know, sometime in March, if the, if the parking lot clears up with snow, weather permitting, until that opens, and so, you know, maybe, maybe March to September, just to be safe. And run the same operation as we did last year, just the trailer, the same grass area. The only difference this year is the entrance, because I believe there's a marijuana facility or something in the Cernac actual dealership part of the building. So we had to move the entrance to one of the other inlets on Route ten.
Okay, and so it'll be basically the same service you were operating there this summer?
Exactly the same.
Okay. And and there's, there's a few things on here, sort of like strict application requirements, that it looks like you're looking for a waiver as far as landscape plans and building plans elevations. Is that right?
Sure.
And I can provide, I can provide a little, if you wouldn't mind me just talking to, for a hot second to talk about that one a little bit?
That'd be great, Curtis. Thanks.
So in, in dialogue, I wanted to mention that I spoke with Kevin before. I don't know if you've ever actually seen me. Kevin, this is Curtis with the planning department. I, I advised Kevin that, given the temporary nature of the special permit application, that I, I'd like to see him get the ball rolling with a pretty like limited application before the planning board. And while the planning board obviously has the right to request additional information, I conferred with him and basically in my memo, asked for waivers for the following submission requirements. The ownership and design seal, the dimensions and elevations of the proposed temporary structures, the, the trailer for the, for Captain Jack's roadside shack, a stamped landscape plan and details of proposed features, including planters. Additionally, the site has no photometric plan or signage plan. And should any of those be proposed independent from the trailers, the board can obviously request those details. I, I advised Kevin, and you know, obviously I can be overruled on this subject, that given the temporary nature of this, the board might be interested in waiving some of these requirements. And I noted as much in my memo. And the only reason I'm mentioning this here is not to pressure the board or any member of the public into taking a particular stance on the matter, but just to provide that information to say what he's applying for waivers for.
And Curtis or maybe Jeff, are we, are we allowed to like, do we grant this as a temporary special permit? We would put a time limit on it? I mean, because I do think that I may be more inclined to let some of this stuff go if I know it's a six-month window as opposed to if this is going to be a permanent operation. Like, is that, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, we, Curtis and I, I mean, we talked about it and there's, there doesn't appear to be anything that would prohibit you from doing it. And I think it, the most, it's the next most flexible thing we could figure out to try to support Captain Jack's looking at the site. You know, I think with the number of waivers and kind of the minimal changes to the site that are necessary, definitely putting a, an end period on it makes sense. You know, and Kevin, you know, I, I mean, I, we, we've talked to the property owner as well and, and we tried to be as clear as possible with everybody that if this were permanent, you know, we would be asking for some potential changes to the site, some improvements and some additional information. And I think, so yeah, our understanding of, of things is that you can issue the permit for some period of time. And I think in this case, it gives the flexibility that I think all parties are kind of looking for. So rather than granting it and letting any other future food truck come in and occupy that space. I mean, I think we, we weren't talking about that. We were really talking about, you know, this specific entity kind of coming in. And Curtis, I give Curtis a lot of credit because he worked directly with Kevin a lot to get us at this meeting. In case there's another meeting that you need to dot i's and cross t's, it would kind of still work with the schedule to maybe open in March, so.
To open at the first of March, right?
Depending weather. I mean, depending on.
Yeah, New England.
Okay, but so we, so we could conceivably grant a special permit, you know, till the end of twenty twenty one or something. And it would expire then, if he's going to be there more long-term, he can come back and we can talk about more details. Or if the property owner wants somebody else there more long-term, we can, I mean, personally, that, that, that appeals to me. I'm, I'm more flexible for, you know, one, one-year window than I would be if this is going to be permanent.
By precedent of the ZBA, although I grant that this is not a, a non-judicial, neither of these two bodies are judicial boards and their by precedent is kind of illustrative but not mandatory. The ZBA has established permits that terminate, that are like non-transferable and terminate with the termination of a particular use by a particular applicant. The draft decision that I've drafted says, you know, this run, I've got it somewhere. It, it says this runs as long as, as Captain Jack's roadside shack is on, on the premises. And the moment it ceases to be on premises, the special permit is no longer valid. And new drive-in restaurants will need to come forward for a new special permit per section twelve point seven of the East Hampton zoning ordinance.
Yeah, it sounds like we might need one more level of that, though, and also to sort of restrict how long he can be there.
Okay.
Till the end of the year or something like that. But, okay, James?
I really like what you're doing with that, Jesse, and how you're framing it. I'm curious, is this going to come before us again? I remember we had discussions about this with the co-op and that placement. Is this going to come before us again when that transition to the co-op comes with a more full plan?
I don't think so. I think when we approved the co-op, we approved Captain Jack's or a similar restaurant in that location. So I think that that use is allowed under their permit. So I don't think we'll need to see them again beforehand, but if for some reason that fell apart, Kevin could come back and say, I'm going to be here again next year and we could figure out how to deal with that. But I, I think that, you know, to get through this year, I think some of the things like, you know, we might want that parking lot repaved and spaces marked and things like that, that I don't think we would necessarily, I personally wouldn't think is as big a deal for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from planning board members or comments? Anybody from the public with comments or questions? You can raise your Zoom hand or your physical hand or unmute your phone and ask to address. Okay, planning department, any other questions or comments or concerns?
I see members, Jarvis, and I, but I did, I'd have two. And hopefully not coming out of the blue, but you know, last year, the applicant had a couple signs to start to direct people into the entrance. And I just wanted to ask if that was, I think that would be good, if that was a factor that you had considered. And the other thing, I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to express some sensitivity to the area behind the trailer. There's a, there's, you have the space behind the trailer, but it is a wetland resource area. So I don't think it rises to a condition or anything like that, but I just wanted to make sure that there's no rubbish or trash or anything that can be, it's not necessarily storing it there, but it's like if it blows over into that, into the stream there. I just wanted to be, I want to be cognizant and sensitive to that area in the, behind the trailer. So those are my two questions, kind of concerns.
Definitely marked, definitely marked with arrows and actually painting arrows on the pavement with the new entrance. Flags, open flags, everything else. And there will be planters blocking off the other inlet so that nobody can enter that way. And I mean, obviously, we try to keep it as clean as possible. And just, I mean, obviously for the wetlands, but just, just to, you know, make it look better and, and everything else. So it is a little windy at times, but we definitely send kids out there at all times, trying to clean up the area and everything. And there wasn't an issue last year, so, you know.
And signage, Kevin, you're planning on more or less doing what you did this year?
Exactly right, yeah.
Which I thought was really cool. I liked it, sort of like a rustic, you know, fish shop kind of stuff you'd see on the Cape or something. It was really neat.
But it is.
Any, James, do you have a question?
I saw Curtis too, just noting. But yeah, I want to, I don't want to get in the way of this because, you know, I love this. It's great business. I'm very curious if you really are a captain. But what I did want to ask is I, I did see a document, a plan come before us. And we talked about in this discussion, some plantings going in to kind of block an entrance and refill. I wondered if we could just bring that plan up, then maybe you could just walk us through it a little bit. But I have to admit, it was a bit, I, I had a little trouble making heads or tails of it. And I just wanted to just look at it, not for the sake of trying to stop anything, but just, you know, understand it. Where's the inflow? Where's the outflow? Like, I can see some arrows kind of showing traffic flow here and it seems a bit squiggly. Help me out.
So as you see, like the arrows going in and out to the left on the bottom, where, right where this is North Hampton. So that's the entrance. And as you, you know, on the right, there's two dots and those are planters preventing people from taking that right, which is like a sidewalk area. And then as you go up, there's the, the parking, and you can see the two trailers on the far right. It's actually more space than it looks like. There's quite a bit of space for cars to move in and out. And, and where it says like the north, that's where the signage will be, the open sign, the arrows, et cetera. And the very, very top is the grass area where the picnic tables are. And are there any other questions there or?
So it, it looks like three trailers there, three little structures. Am I missing that, Kevin?
The, the one on the front is the main trailer. The one in the back is storage at the airstream.
Okay.
And then the other one is another sort of refrigerated storage, but it looks like a trailer as well.
Okay.
And then that little tiny square is the port of body.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then the, the traffic counts that are listed on here, is that sort of your experience from this summer?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And I know the window says twelve to three, and then there's like a break with four to eight, but a lot of times, you know, the twelve, twenty-five to thirty cars, sometimes they're for an hour, two hours sitting there, so it looks, you know, they just don't leave. So that's why that, that is an hour gap. Most people don't eat lunch or dinner, you know, in that, that time period. They might get a car or two to trickle in, but for the most part, it's the slower times.
I was thinking to myself, as I looked at this, that I trust those traffic estimates probably more than just about any traffic document I've ever seen. And that's exactly, that's exactly what Kevin vouched for me here, but that's what I said.
Trust me, they, they're pretty right on.
Yeah, it, there's some skepticism about the ITE numbers, right? When you can actually count the cars that are in an existing business, it's a little easier. Kevin, you're, you're looking for twelve to eight for your business hours, is that right?
Correct.
And that's seven days? Oh, no, Tuesday.
It'll be Tuesday through Sunday.
Okay.
And what, where is the trash, actually? Just curious.
So there's, there's about eight receptacles. There's six or seven on the, oh no, there's three or four on the grass area up top. And then right, I can just block a little bit, but right in front of the trailer, there's three or four more. So yeah, in total, there's about eight trash cans. And then there's no dumpster, there's no dumpster or anything. We take all that back to the shack. We have a van that goes back and forth all day. So there's no actual dumpster or grease trap or anything on that property.
Okay, and then explain a little bit about how you sort of segregate, you know, there's, there's the lineup system for the customers, but it's not in the parking lot, right? It's sort of, you, you have that roped off with planters and stuff this season.
Yeah, it's all planted and roped off and Yeah, it's all planted and roped off and, um, uh, yeah, the, the cars can't get through.
Yeah, okay. Any deliveries or, or things like that, that, that get brought in, or is it just when you guys come to the site, you bring stuff?
We have our little van, this little white, uh, you know, Ford Transit that we bring stuff back and forth with. And the only person that comes through is the porta potty guy once a week to clean up.
Okay.
Supplies coming in. How often is that?
They come to the shack. So every morning we.
Daily?
At, at, uh, at Captain Jack's?
Yeah.
Oh, every day at Captain Jack's at the, at the, uh, 232 location. And then we bring it every morning in the van before we're open to the, um, to the, the 114 site.
Oh, okay. I see. So deliveries go to your old facility and then you guys.
That's where we do all the prep. Yeah.
And that's where you bring your van, you use the van to bring everything over?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I think we've gone through most of these, the considerations under the.
I have a question about lighting when you have a moment.
Yeah, please.
So it looks like you're going to be, is it wait for the hours until 8:00 PM?
Right.
What happens at night? Is there light, is there lighting on the site that, that, um, so that people can safely get to and from their vehicles?
Actually, the whole, um, you know, it was a car lot, so the whole lot is lighted.
Okay. Thanks.
I just had one more question. Um, on the graphic that's up now, and I see it, so that I see the arrows for entering and exiting and the planters. Is there anything else that would go on that curb cut that's above the word street? Is there anything to prevent a car from just?
There, there'll be blocked with other planters there.
Okay. Cause that, cause that's how it was, I think, last, last summer.
Planters along that whole strip.
Okay. I think that's important just to focus people to that one enter, entrance and exits. Because if that, if and when that dispensary, if that dispensary comes online this summer and you're operating.
Yeah.
That area is going to be very busy. And I just want to make sure that it's kind of consolidated to where you kind of have it shown here. Cause then a little bit further down, the dispensary has a consolidated entrance.
Sure.
So it'll just be important because it's going to be busy.
It's for the safety of everybody. It makes way more sense to have it clearly marked. So.
Yeah, that's.
That's all we want. That's all we want.
Yeah. Well, the last thing we want is 200 feet of people just pulling out wherever. So I think that helps.
Or we don't want a large pileup and it kills our business for the day.
Yep. Yep.
Or getting hurt. We don't want anybody there.
Yeah. Any other questions from planning board members?
Harry has one.
Harry?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm making, uh, make a suggestion. This guy saw some soft serve right there. Seen a place across the street's closed. He probably make a million bucks here if he sold soft serve.
Well, the problem with the soft serve is you need, um, a lot of water and that, that particular site doesn't provide a lot of water. So. But it's been, trust me, we've thought of it.
You'd have a, you'd have a big, you'd have a monstrous business right there.
Well, if we could figure it out, we would do it, but.
Can I ask why eight o'clock is, uh, is your chosen time limit? I would think on a hot summer night, you'd go later.
Well, the thing is, you know, we close at eight, but by the time we finish the orders, like, you know, we'll be back up for maybe 35, 40 minutes. And people will just sit out there all night. So, um, and I'm really tired. I do it all myself. So, you know, those are 16, 17 hour days, like you just break down.
Let him go home, James. Stop me.
Work all day for my.
Enough is enough, James. Enough is enough.
The planning board conditions this approval that you stay open.
James wants his 11:00 PM lobster rolls.
Yeah, there you go.
My head. We like, we like your proposal too much.
Yeah. Um, all right. Any other questions, comments?
And I, you know, this is temporary. And again, this is not in any way trying to muck with the system here. The, the parking I know was a little, it's the pre-existing. There was a building there. There's some parking. Um, and it's, I, I think if I remember right, there are mark, it is striped. Is that right? I'm, I'm trying.
It's not striped because, I mean, we could, but, um, everything was so frantic last year that, um, you know, we, and it wasn't my space. And we didn't know what the CERNAC were going to do with the space. So, um, what we do is we have our staff park in each aisle. And like each position at the beginning, and then that kind of sets the tone for where everybody should park. If that makes sense. There's about six or seven kids that work there every day. So, you know, there'll be like two cars in the middle, one car in each end. And then that usually it's kind of like lemmings. They kind of just line up once, once, once it's set.
I've been one of those lemmings. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, yeah, James, um, uh, gave me an idea, which was that on the, um, left side, I think the south side of the property, um, when that, uh, property is being used, there's going to be a, um, some sort of separator, maybe.
Yeah, there's a separator, that's where the, the stripe bar is.
Yeah.
What is that?
There's a straight bar. See that strike kind of bar on the left?
Yeah.
The CERNAC claimed they were going to put planters along that whole strip, similar to what was on North Hampton Street.
Right. So if somebody, uh, drives into the wrong parking lot, either looking for you or looking next door, vice versa, they'd have to.
Leave.
Have to leave. Yeah.
Yeah. Per, per the approved plan for 102 North Hampton for Apocal, there's going to be a set of planters with chain connecting them across that entire section. I, it's, I mean, obviously they're still working on getting up and running at Apocal. And their indication is that they want to be up and running as of April 1st. So these will be co-committing at the same point, um, such that that, that like chain and divider will be up by that point. But that would, that, that's I believe what the CERNAC are illustrating there.
Thanks.
I don't know about you, Jesse, but I'm ready to approve.
Are we ready for a motion? Uh, planning department, anything left?
I don't have anything. I don't know if Curtis has anything.
I think that, I think the one thing that I wanted to make sure that I was addressing from planning side, and I know I've editorialized more during this application than I usually do. But the thing that I would, uh, you, y'all seem to have, the, I was not here during last season. And I wa, and you all considered the traffic on the premises, and I think that those numbers sound realistic and I'm comfortable with them. I just, I, I wanted to make sure that y'all saw them and that concluded that those numbers seemed accurate and that you think the site can manage those.
Yeah. And I do think, um, just to make it explicit, if we're going to have a motion, I mean, I would say rather than making Kevin sort of figure out when it's going to end or not. I think if we just would, uh, grant it through the end of 2021, then if it's August, September, October, whatever he wants to do, at least there's some flexibility there. That would be my suggestion. Does that work for you, Kevin?
That'd be the best. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm trying to think, I, I don't, I mean, I think other than sort of what we've discussed here, I don't think there's any conditions. I guess if we're putting together a decision though, we probably would want the conditions that, you know, the North Hampton Street would have been blocked off by, um, planters. And that, um, I think probably we want to have a condition now that I'm thinking about what Curtis said, that, you know, i- if they aren't, I mean, how do we deal with the fact that Apocal may not be up and running and may not have blocked off those two lots?
Well, I think the.
In my imagination, in my imagination, and I recognize this is just, this is completely unvarnished, just my opinion. My concerns about Apocal being up and running are mitigated by the fact that if Apocal's not up and running, the issues of traffic crossing between the two parcels are many.
I think you're right, Curtis. So we leave that obligation on Apocal. And if they're up and running, they'll have done that. And if they're not, then it won't be as big of a concern anyway.
The only circumstance in which I perceive there to be any risk is when Apocal's under construction, which shouldn't be too crazy because they're just retenanting an existing structure. And that during that period, you could have traffic fleet pre-flowing, but it won't be recite to the retail use on, uh, traffic to the retail use on site.
Okay. So I, I guess the only conditions I would want for me is that it expires at the end of 2021. And that it, um, that the applicant does block off that rest of North Hampton Street with planters to make it clear that traffic can't exit other than at the entrance and exit. Or any, any other conditions from board members that they would want? Okay.
I like those two. Did we open it up to public? I don't remember.
They did, but I'll ask again. We've had more conversations. If there's anybody else here who has any comments, questions, concerns, raise your hand, raise your zoom hand, unmute and ask to address the board. Oh, Angelica, I got a hand raised. Please.
Hi, I'm Angelica from the reminder. Um, two things, I'm actually doing a story on, um, the grocery store, uh, the River Valley Co-op, and they told me that they're set to open, um, late June, early July. So just throwing that out there. And, um, I'm actually been trying to get in contact with, um, Captain Jack. I'm not going to pronounce your last name because I'll butcher it. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there as well because I have a time sensitive story. Uh, so I just wanted to share those two things.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Curtis?
Kevin, uh, I, I've spoken with both you and Angelica before. I mean, just for ease of all parties, would you do, uh, this? I suppose this isn't a matter for a public record. So, um.
We can discuss off, off camera maybe about that.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll call you tomorrow, Kevin, if that's all right. Not, not important. I just don't want to commit it to the public record.
Any other public comments or questions?
I just wanted to say real quick, I appreciate Kevin, you know, going through this process with us and I appreciate the board. I think, you know, James, you talk about this a lot. I think, I think this is showing flexibility as, as flexible as we can get. So I'm really just applauding, uh, everybody here. It's, it's, it's important to support Captain Jackson. Um, this was, this was a good, I, I think Kevin, I think this is turning out to be a good process, especially if you get the vote tonight and it, uh, it's just good. So hopefully that's, um, you know, you can tell if you do connect and have an article, you can, you can proudly say that you would. You've gotten your approval to.
Thank you very much.
Get into the, the other site again.
All right. Excellent. All right, James.
I motion to approve the special permit under sections 12.7 and 10.52 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance to operate a drive-in restaurant at 114 North Hampton Street for Captain Jack's with the two aforementioned conditions relating to it ending at 2021 and the planting.
Oh, Austin jumps in with a second.
I'll second that.
All right. Voting to approve the special permit. James?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I. Kevin, best of luck. Can't wait to.
Are you a captain?
Are you a captain?
I don't, what's the qualification? Sure. Thank you very much.
And while we're still on the record on that one, I just want to state, we've, uh, I heard that the board found that the project conforms with applicable standards, uh, for the commercial development. It conforms with all relevant city, state and federal regs, protects the waters and city amenities, provides for convenient and safe, uh, vehicle pedestrian, uh, movement, possesses adequate drainage, protects wetlands and watersheds, mitigates adverse impacts on city infrastructure and utilities, provides for off-street parking loading and unloading site circulation, integrates into the surrounding landscape by means of design features, minimizes areas of vegetation removal and maintains consistency with the surrounding built environment.
And granted the waivers that Kevin had requested. Yeah.
Good ears, Curtis.
We did a good job. Thank you for reading that instead of me, Curtis. Thank you, Kevin. Best of luck. All right. And that concludes my participation in this meeting. So I will hand this off to James to get you all over the finish line. Best of luck and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
All right. As you know, Jesse recused himself because he has a client involved with our, our next agenda item, uh, which is the High Five Inc. Seeking a special permit. Uh, is the, is there someone here from the applicant to discuss this?
Yes, I'm here. Kevin Perry from Five Star.
So I remember, oh, we talked about this at some length last time. I think we asked for a few things. Do you have any new information for us?
I do. I, I passed along a new site plan which reflected the two, uh, pole lights, uh, and the wall packs on there. As long as made a note, uh, as, as well as made a note rather to the general area that the Gable End signage is going to go, uh, so Curtis could, should have that. Curtis, you, are you able to share that? I'm remote right.
Would you rather me do it or would you rather do it?
If you could, if you wouldn't mind, I'm not in my office right now.
No problem at all. One second.
Just wait for that to come up?
Uh, yeah, just, just one sec. My apologies.
All right. I'm just filling the void. No one likes the silence like that. It's uncomfortable.
Smiddle, updated smiddle. So I'm just going to pull up the updated site plans, um, that we got just a second ago. As of the 25th. There we go.
Thank you. All right. What are we looking at?
So you'll notice that two, uh, light poles are added on the north side of the plan. If you're looking at it in plan view there. Those are dark sky compliant and will provide, um, one foot candle illumination for the lot in conjunction with the seven wall packs noted on the northern area of the building. You'll also notice on the Westley Gable End, we have noted, we will put it off to the side, that there is a new signage on the Gable End and conforms with local ordinances. Uh, signs to be applied for in a several signage permit, but it will be a conforming, uh, sign.
Okay.
So I believe that was one of the, the requests. And the second request, uh, to my knowledge was the discussion of the odor control. And Curtis may be better poised to explain that. We had some back and forth. Uh, I believe the health agent is on board with some language that Curtis had kindly drafted. My client is also acceptable to that language. We feel it's a good compromise to, uh, to protect all parties involved and, and make sure that there are no odor, no odor issues.
Curtis, can you tell us about that language?
Sure thing. Can you, you can't see the email that I just pulled up, right?
Negative.
All right. One second. And forgive me for not forwarding this to the board in the first place, since it wasn't a formal item of correspondence, but rather was a potential condition for the decision. I wasn't certain whether it was presumptive to forward ahead of time. That being said, there we go. Okay. Okay. We can see this email here.
Okay.
So.
The stuff in italics?
Yes. So, uh, and I'll, I'll read it into the record as well. Um, we, we went back and forth with the, uh, health agent, the planning staff and the applicant and came up with the language, uh, as seen here. Conditions after hearing from and questioning the applicant and members of the public at the public hearing. And in light of the proceeding, the board therefore decided to grant the special permit under East Hampton zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Obviously that's standard language. One, prior to the issuance of any building permit for the proposed cultivation facility, the applicant shall come before the planning board to submit an odor control maintenance plan, including details of selected air ventilation and/or emission control systems and the maintenance thereof at the proposed facility. The board shall determine with input from the health agent, if these plans reasonably ensure that the project conforms with the provisions of section 10.21, the, uh, odor nuisance element and the East Hampton zoning ordinances and all other applicable regulations regarding odor emissions and/or nuisance. The applicant must record the approved odor, uh, control maintenance plan with the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds prior to the exercise of the special permit.
Well, I can tell you right off, that makes me feel tremendously better. That's certainly going to cover it for me. Obviously coming before us again, getting the health agent involved. How does the rest of the board feel about that? I am.
I agree. I think it's great.
Yeah, it's well done. Good solution. Harry, Austin, any thoughts on it?
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And that for me was the big hang up, Mr. Perry. All right. You know, that's just, that, that's something that we take seriously and have to do a good job of. And making sure that there's some, um, regulation there to enforce that is important. So does anyone have, uh, the lighting look good? The signage look good? I don't remember anything else that really stood out for me on this. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on the board? No? Okay. Uh, I'm not sure who from the public we have left. I only see two, Zoe and Angelica. But if either of you want to, uh, talk about this, now's the time. Anything you want to say? I'm not seeing anything there. So, um, let's talk about any conditions we might have. I'm not seeing any special conditions, um, that, that we need to add in this, except for that one that you just, uh, put forward. That would be the only one. Um, can anyone, go ahead, Curtis?
Kevin, um, I don't know where things stand with the conservation commission. Have you received, uh, are you going to have to do anything beyond the existing, uh, order of conditions that you currently have?
Uh, yes, she asked for a, uh, a determination if, when we go there, but we are just not at that phase right now. So I expected it was going to be a quick, uh, one visit stop just for the fence, because the fence is actually within the wetlands boundary. So, um, you know, we had spoke, but until we're, you know, construction's just about commencing. We did not plan on, on going there. I'm more worried about something timing out in, in case that drags out a little bit farther. In fact, we did speak to her and we would be able to apply for a building permit and even begin construction. We literally, it's just the fence. That's the problem. So in case I'd been speaking, but, uh, did not see any issues there.
And it's not in the wetland. It's just in the buffer zone, right?
Yeah, correct. Yes, should clarify. Just the buffer zone and, and barely in the buffer zone at, at that. But yes, it is.
But usually there's just a general condition that would be just that the project is built and maintained substantially in accordance with the plan. So that, James, that's kind of like a standard condition. And, you know, it just future reference for all of us. So, so, you know, if Kevin needs to make a substantial change to the site, you know, it would require a special permit. If it's a minor change, there's an opportunity to present the plan to the board, but. you know, it would require a special permit. If it's a minor change, there's an opportunity to present the plan to the board, but I would add that as a kind of a stock condition that, that we would have on all special permits, is just to link it to the plan set.
Yep, no issues with that.
James, your, your microphone's dead.
Nope.
All right, he's going to hold on. Yeah, we talked about this before. He made it to the whole part of the meeting.
So close.
I think he's going to call in. All right. Um, Curtis, may I ask you, did you, did you draft a decision for this, um, in advance of this meeting?
I drafted the conditions, but I do not have the minutes inserted, and I don't have all of the findings complete. So, um, the conditions that I have are
Let's wait for, let's wait for James to come back. I just wanted to ask if you had that stuff. I think, um, you know, I think it could be good to go through some of the cannabis-specific findings, uh, if the board is ready to consider a decision, and we'll, I'll let James, all right, I see James is coming back in. But if there's an opportunity to go through them, show them on the screen perhaps, and just, you know, with a little level of detail for this one, it would be good.
Well, I will pull that up now, so give me a moment.
I think we can hear
Oh, unmute him.
Yeah.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Sorry about that. Well, it's an odd driver thing. So, if I'm right, um, I'm going to say two things. We have the two conditions, the general condition that Jeff mentioned, and the condition worked together with the health agent between Curtis. And we'll be looking for a motion, actually, before I do that, I want to say this, that we'll be finding that the project is in conformance with the provisions of the ordinances of the City of Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations to state and federal agencies, that it has protection of city amenities and abutting properties, and a minimization of detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural scenic or historic features on the site, minimization of traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development, unadjacent highways or roads, maximizes the inconvenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement on the site, clearly because there's no retail component, adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage and refuge, and the draining of surface and subsurface water, adequate means of protecting wetlands, water sheds, aquifers, and well areas, mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect of the city's water supply and distribution systems, sewage collection and treatment system, fire protection and street provision for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting, and internal traffic control. Applicants' efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetative buffers and retention of open space or agricultural land, minimization of the area over which the existing vegetation is to be removed, where tree removal is required, special attention is to be given to the planting of replacement trees, not relevant here, the consistency of the development with respect to setback area placement of parking, architectural style landscaping of the surrounding building and its development, adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution or surface of groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation to minimize changes in groundwater levels, levels, increased runoff, and potential for flooding, and finally, adequacy of the methods to ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by a reason of unacceptable level of air-water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures and accessories, which we've dealt with, I think, uh, especially with that last condition. And we'll be looking for a motion with the two aforementioned conditions for High Five Inc. seeking a special permit under ten point ten and twelve point nine.
Curtis, did that cover everything you wanted to do?
Yeah, I'm going to pull up the, um, my draft decision right now. Obviously, this is a draft. You'll note very clearly that it says name and date here, which I'm going to have to insert. Additionally, the decision will need to incorporate the specific findings that the board made, uh, in line with what, um, uh, with what James just said, and finally include a summation of the minutes from the previous meeting and this current meeting relating to High Five. The conditions, uh, start here, and this first one is the verbatim one that I just read into the record regarding the odor control plan. The only relevant portion is that, uh, Kevin, when it's, when, when you're recording all of this with the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, I'm going to give you a packet that in, that includes the decision, and you're, at some point, you're going to have a, a plan of, as to odor control, both like what you're installing and how you're going to maintain it. That's going to get approved by the board and by the health agent, and then you go back and record that with the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds. Okay?
Sure.
Okay, and then, um, there's that standard condition that we were just talking about. All interior and exterior improvements uh, shall be installed and maintained substantially in accordance with the approved plans, uh, prior to the C of O standard. Um, oh, that one's irrelevant. Um, any change in ownership, this is a marijuana-specific one, any change of ownership which is subject to review and/or approval by the CCC shall appear before the planning board prior to operations to acknowledge the existing conditions of the permit and compliance therewith or changes thereto. Uh, any changes that substantially alter, alter the general operation, significant changes to the interior floor plan, or changes that may significantly alter the nature of operations and/or potential impact shall be presented to the planning board at a public meeting. The cannabis establishment shall not create a nuisance situation pursuant to the definition of nuisance under section ten ten five seven of the zoning ordinance. Special permit with the, associated with this use is contingent upon continuous licensure. The special permit allows for operation to the fullest extent allowed by the bylaws and zoning ordinances of the city of East Hampton. I should note at this point that that's the language that I would also use as an amendment to the special permit for INSA that we discussed earlier in this meeting, and it is the exact same language that we used for Apocal very recently.
I would, I would, sorry, this is, I, I would just say that maybe the the last condition about hours is probably not even applicable. This is, so, this is one of our first, um, strictly cultivation special permits, so I think it's still a carryover, and we, you know, and I guess this is a question for the board, but generally speaking, we are not, we're not applying any hours of operation for cultivation. It was, and this is that holdover from retail, a retail.
Yeah, given it's a retail component, I think that completely makes sense.
Is there any, I, I raised this one in the past, and, and I, I grant that this is probably unlikely. Is there any reason to defensively include that language to ensure that the applicant unambiguously has enjoyment to manufacture outside of what we would consider to be marijuana hours for retail, granting that he's not retail? I know that that's kind of a
And our zoning only explicitly states hours for retail. There are no stated hours. So wouldn't that mean that by default, they could go whenever they want? And so you're suggesting
That logic checks out to me. Yep, I'm fine.
Yeah, I would like to clarify. I mean, uh, that makes sense. We may be a twenty-four-hour operation. I mean, granted, the bulk of it is days, but you would have situations, uh, where you may have staff there at night, so, um, you know, be, given that there's no retail, we would like, uh, twenty-four-seven access to the facility.
So, the question is, are you more comfortable? Like, I'm not sure. I, I think that because the zoning doesn't require it, it only has mentioned for retail rules, that it's probably best that we not state anything.
No, I think, James, I think you're absolutely right, because if I'm saying it's going to operate, my, my imagination, Kevin, is that maybe an including language that says, en- enjoy operation to the fullest extent, it's protecting you to know that you can operate to the fullest extent. But James's point is that the zoning ordinance does not declare an extent, and thereby I'm linking it to nothing. So I'm just going to delete that sentence and thereby exert no control over the hours.
Perfect. Thank you.
Does that, does that check out with what you were saying, James?
It surely does. Thank you.
Great.
Please continue, because on my small phone, I'm having trouble reading it, so.
Yeah, I've also zoomed out pretty far. Sorry. Um, uh, this is, uh, all signs shall comply with section ten standard. Um, any waivers by the CCC with, uh, with, by the operation shall be reviewed, approved by the planning board prior to implementation. Um, standard, uh, the can, the CCC shall provide notice to the city of any enforcement order, um, standard for cannabis, obviously, and then that's the end of them.
That all seemed fair to me. Uh, Mr. Perry, are you comfortable with everything that was said there?
Uh, very much so. Yes, I appreciate it.
Several more conditions than I originally imagined, but they're really only kind of stock stuff. Uh, anyone from the board have any comments or questions at this point? Planning department, anything else you want to add?
Um, just a general question, and I try, I do try to ask this of everybody, but Kevin, do you have an understanding of the timeline that you're generally anticipating to work on? Just, it's helpful sometimes to have a general understanding of when, when project might, you know, appear kind of to, to start, start taking some action. So I was just curious.
Well, unfortunately, some of it is, is going to be dictated by, uh, our clients' funding. So, you know, we could be pulling a permit as soon as forty-five days. We could be pulling a permit in six months. Um, so it's, that's a little up in the air. The actual construction portion is going to take around eight months. Um, but as to when that commences, I'll have a better handle in the next probably two to six weeks.
It might be instructive for this board if you were to allow us at a later date to have a, a site as a, to see it. It might impact anything like it that comes in the future. I hope you'd be amenable to that.
We certainly will. Yeah, especially, uh, you know, pre-operation, uh, post-operation, things get a little, a little tight. But yeah, pre-operation, we'd love to have you down for a tour.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, I think we're looking for a motion, uh, to approve High Five Inc. seeking a special permit for cannabis, uh, product manufacturer at nineteen O'Mockaway with the aforementioned conditions.
Yep, uh, well, since you already said it all, also moved. I was going to say that.
Sorry. I know you had it, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Austin? I can't see.
It was, yeah.
All right, all in favor. Harry?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I. Uh, good luck, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Good luck, Kevin.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Great. All right, I'm sure you'll let me know, Curtis, if I need to sign anything there.
Yes, um, I, yeah, 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 because I'll have to get Jesse for the other one.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that leaves, I see nothing else on the agenda. Does anyone have any announcements?
I have one, just a schedule item. Um, it may appear that there's, I, there is a need to convene, um, at the next meeting, February sixteenth. I know we, I think there was an attempt to try to keep it not a meeting, but, um, I've tried really hard. Uh, but what is, I just, I just wanted to make sure that everyone has that on their calendar, and it gets worse in that, um, there is also a request to have the planning board attend a joint public meeting with the slight, uh, with not, the city council the next night.
Right.
Which is, uh, February seventeenth. Um, on the sixteenth, there's a, a joint public hearing with ordinance to review a proposed solar, um, a change to the solar bylaw. And, and it ca, it came from ordinance and city council, and basically it's to start a discussion about requiring solar on larger buildings. Um, so I don't know, you know, it may take some discussion, and that would be the first, um, first hearing to, to get that going. Um, that'll be at six fifteen on February sixteenth, and I'll send out an email probably tomorrow to the group. And then the next night is the Wednesday evening at six fifteen, and that's a joint meeting with city council to get a formal presentation, um, of the housing production plan. And then the hope and goal is to have both the city council and planning board vote to adopt um, the housing production plan so that it can be sent to the state. So in the next couple of days, I'll send a reminder to, for both of those to the group, but I did want to flag that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jeff. It sounds like it's going to be a busy month as usual. Any other announcements? Harry, you got anything for us? All right, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, Austin?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Have a lovely evening, everyone.
Thank you.